Good evening and welcome. This is the regularly scheduled East Almeno Public School School Committee meeting. It is October 19th, 2020. Call the meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We have the full committee in attendance tonight. And we can move right forward. We have no minutes for approval. So we'll keep on moving. The first opportunity for visitors to address the committee. So if there's anybody out there now that would like to speak at our meeting, this would be your opportunity to do that this evening. I don't see any hands raised up. Now I do. Ryan, you're bringing Christina. Thank you. Hello Christina, you're muted if you're coming in. Still on mute.
Sorry, I'm at soccer too.
Awesome. How's the game going?
Yeah.
Huh? How's the game going?
It's like drills, so it's not really, but I'm still trying to kind of like, okay, I'm gonna try to do this while I'm here and we all know how that works. But getting it done, right?
That's right. What's happening?
Um, so I had a question. I know I've talked to a lot of people, so it's not just myself, but a lot of people in town. You know, that feel like that our kids should be back for in-person learning. So my question would be what matrix and qualifiable data are being used to determine a potential reopening in schools? And we have so I have a follow-up question too, but I don't know if we can answer that.
Yeah, so this isn't necessarily a time for questions, Christina. Certainly if you have things you want to say, we do, we're gonna talk about some of our plans later on in the agenda.
Okay.
But if you, this is more of an opportunity for statements. And if you want to ask questions, we won't necessarily answer them right now, but we will later on in the meeting.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's kind of the all just were mostly questions going along with that, along with the reopening, you know, like, so at least we could all be transparent going forward, you know? I know some people were apprehensive about the hybrid and I was curious if we would look at other towns in the area and possibly switch a hybrid plan if we saw others that worked better. Yeah, but like you said, if it's not, I mean, just because I can tell you, I am home with my kids most of the days and it is a struggle and I know everybody's doing the best they can. The teachers are awesome. I do the best I can. It's, I mean, I hate to say it, it's not working and I do feel like COVID is not the only issue we should be concerned with. I mean, COVID is not going away and I don't feel as though we should just be looking at COVID numbers. I think we need to also focus on our kids' education, their mental health. You know, there's so much more to it that I feel like we're failing them if we're only looking at COVID. And if all other essential businesses and everything else have been open so far, then why can the schools not be open?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Christina. Yep, appreciate it. Okay, anybody else this evening that would like to make a statement? Ryan, we have another hand up. Karen. Hi Karen, are you there?
Hi, yes, I am. How are you?
I'm well. How are you tonight?
I'm good, thank you. My name's Karen Phillips. I have two kids in town, fifth grade and second grade. And I absolutely love their teachers, huge supporter of the teachers in town. I um, do have a question. I am speaking on behalf of a large and growing number of families in town that feel it is their right to choose for their children to learn in person. And I know that Christine has asked a few questions. I have one specific question. And our final, our question is, we would like to see a formal steering committee immediately formed to focus on the return to a fall safe reopening in conjunction with the DPH. In part, and begin, the committee will further investigate and consider recreating a more robust hybrid model that would be suitable to the majority in our town. The committee could include various stakeholders such as you and a member of the school committee, Department of Public Health, medical professionals, teachers, town human resources, parents and students. Are you willing to coordinate such a committee? And if so, what would be the next step?
So Karen, again, as I, as I said prior, not necessarily a time to ask questions. Certainly we welcome your questions. And we are gonna address some of these issues later on in the meeting. So if you stay tuned, hopefully we can, we can address some of those points.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time. Okay, so seeing no more hands raised, we will move forward with our agenda. And we have an opportunity for the committee or subcommittee communications. Does anyone have anything this evening?
I actually wanted to say something tonight. First of all, Squire Farms, they are doing a fundraiser for all of our schools. You just go on their website and you can get wreaths and garland and things like that. The prices actually were very reasonable. So supporting all our schools when you go in there. So helping somebody local and we're helping our kids and I'm all thumbs up for that because I know I'm trying to do all my shopping as local as possible this year. The other thing I wanted to say is, last week we were voting on the resolutions for the MASC annual meeting. And for those of you out there, it's just the, all the school committees come in and they have a meeting once a year and they create these resolutions of things that they think they would like to lobby on behalf of the state to vote on. And I had a problem with one of them. It was the one with us having the kids being able to vote if they're under 16. And I said, well, let's just let it go because I knew the will of the committee was probably to do that. So I'm just gonna voice my opinion on it. Obviously, I'm gonna vote the way our committee has chosen. I just don't think it's a wise idea. I think these children shouldn't have necessarily right to vote because they can't be in the military. They can't live on their own. They can't, even, even their IEPs, they, they have no control over those. There's voting on drugs, alcohol, on tobacco questions, there's things like that. So I'm just throwing out there because I felt after, after I said, ah, let it go. I said, no, I feel strongly about this. I think there's some kids that are at that age where they could and I think 16 is a tough, tough time for us to expect our kids to be taking that on. That said, children should always talk with their family about things like that that they find important and that passion should always happen. So there, I just had to say it. So, thank you.
Greg, if I can do a quick follow-up with that and I'll keep it short. As I stated in the, in the last meeting, Beth, and for the benefit of the community, the committee and everybody watching, this resolution has come before the Board of Directors several times. And it's just something, they go through these old resolutions during a meeting and they basically pick and choose what they want to throw on the table again to see if it gains any, any speed or momentum. I feel that this one at the delegated assembly will be a controversial one based on what you said, Beth, because that's the feeling across the state the last time it was brought up and I was an intricate part of the delegate assembly. That being said, I'm not sure it will even make it off the floor of the delegate assembly. And if it's follows the same path as it has in the previous years, the legislature won't even address it.
I know that. Say my piece about it because I just let it go.
Listen, everybody's entitled to their opinion. And if you're, you're more than welcome to give your opinion at the delegate assembly when they, when they start asking. So, all right. That's a quick history of it, but I understand and I appreciate your thoughts as always. Okay, that's Mike Spiel.
Okay. Anyone else? No. Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. We will move forward. We have our 5.1.1, which is a review of our capital projects for FY '22. That's crazy.
It is crazy. So in all of your packets, you have the five-year spreadsheet of the capital plan. It's been updated to include at the bottom, the projects that moved forward in last year's budget. And those were the high school electrical switchgear and distribution and the second phase of the steam piping and the heating system at Maple Shade. In fiscal year '22, we have approximately 15 projects, most of which right now have been adjusted for cost, either adding 3% or in some cases, when we're looking at roof projects, using the two accelerated repair programs that we've been in with the MSBA and getting an idea of pricing through these different projects. So in some cases, our cost for, say roofing, something like Maple Shades, two flat roofs, the slanted roofs on the calf and the gymnasium were replaced back in 2011, but that price itself has come down. So you're looking at roughly 15 projects that totals to about $9,168,654. In that, remember, you have a number of projects that around the high school that would be picked up in the comprehensive project as we continue to move through the Massachusetts School Building Authority eligibility process.
Yeah, that, that's more than 60%. That's about 6 million of the nine, right?
Correct.
Including the feasibility study, right?
Right.
Okay.
The, just going off of last year, how you prioritize the projects. The number one project that still is sitting here, based on last year's prioritization, is the replacement of the modulars at Mountain View. And that actually, that cost has come down as well, given that we just at Meadowbrook replaced four classrooms that were modular classrooms. And so the Mountain View project is now estimated to cost about $950,000 for the two classrooms that currently are in a modular trailer, if you will, attached to the building.
Any questions on the capital list?
Yeah, the, the Maple Shade roof replacement, would that fall under MSBA accelerated?
We could give it a shot. It's, we've replaced two sections of it, but certainly, you know, we could look at that process.
I definitely would encourage looking at that process just based on the price tag and the fact that when the other two roofs were replaced, it was because of the catastrophic snows we had back in 2011 with, you know, you know, the roof almost collapsing type of scenario. So I definitely would, I would encourage looking into it to see if it's a possibility.
Okay.
Because it is a big price tag. I understand the need and everything, but I, I think it's worth a shot.
Yeah. So is there gonna be any money for capital projects this year?
You know, I think as the state continues to work through their budget process, they are trying to hold chapter 70 in at least the position that it was last year to help out towns and school systems and possibly if they can even give a small increase. So, you know, hopefully that same type of support is going also to municipalities.
All right.
Are we handing this to the town manager Gordon next or what's next?
So I would bring this back to all of you, possibly to prioritize it. I wanted to at least show you the projects. And we're still looking to refine Maple Shade's renovation of their play area and redoing the asphalt. That price, I think, will come down, but I have to verify that with what Mr. Fredette and Mr. Dunn have put together. We, in combination, if we were to get that project and we were paving, we did show what it might cost if you continued that paving all the way through into redoing their parking lot, repaving it and adding probably one catch basin. Because what happens at Maple Shade is you have a hill that melts as, you know, if we've had a snow and water comes across the parking lot and inevitably we have one side of the parking lot that's mostly ice for the rest of the winter because the melting and the freezing just keeps rehappening.
Okay. All right. A lot of things to do on the schools as every year there are. If you look at the following years, 9 million this year, 3 million next year, 5 million the following year. A lot of projects. Usually we get about half a million every year, although we did get the four classrooms at Meadowbrook last year.
Right.
Yep. Okay. We'll continue to work on it and we'll, again, we'll bring it back for some prioritization.
Right. And we would probably submit in November to the town manager.
Okay.
So I'll bring it back for November 2nd. Full committee meeting?
Perfect. Okay.
And that segues right into our continued work with the Mass School Building Authority as we've entered officially as of October 1st, their eligibility period. And in your package, you have a timeframe, our eligibility period runs from October 1st until June 28th of 2021. And in that timeframe, we have to accomplish roughly eight, what they call L, I guess they have just requirements. I thought they had a a more formal name, but just the requirements. We've already completed one, which was just the initial compliance certification. That was due November 2nd. We've completed it and sent that on to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And then we have to work our way down through the requirements. So you have the initial compliance certification. You have the development and establishment of a school building committee. You have the educational profile questionnaire, online enrollment projection, enrollment certification and execution. We would have to update and provide them a much more detailed look at how we maintain our buildings and go through capital planning. And then towards the end, the, we bring to the town council and work with the town council, hopefully to appropriate and authorize the feasibility study. And if that happens in the late spring, then the board at the MSBA would vote hopefully to enter into an agreement with us. And then we would be moving forward from the eligibility into the feasibility study. Our most recent discussion with the Mass School Building Authority was that we possibly would be eligible, I believe, for 56% reimbursement of all eligible costs. And just to caution, although that's a better number than we've received in the accelerated repair, just the key word is eligible cost. There are costs in every project that the MSBA feels they cannot reimburse and they'll, they'll highlight those as we go through. But anything that is eligible would be reimbursed to the town at 56%.
Right. And just so folks are aware, not to cut you off, Corn, sorry. Just to piggyback on that, we're talking the pool and central office mainly are the two big ones.
Auditorium maybe?
Auditorium.
Above a certain size.
Yeah, they would, yeah, they would, okay, a certain size. It's also certain construction pieces during that process. There are certain costs that are not eligible. They also cap contingencies and that type of thing as you continue to plan. You know, they'll reimburse up to a certain amount.
Right. Okay.
But what we found, and I think Mrs. Blair can attest to this, the partnership definitely in the accelerated repair, and I'm assuming it's gonna work this way in their comprehensive project and process. They have been very good at quickly, once we submit requisitions, paying those requisitions and the money comes back into the town.
Yes, that's, that's correct, Mr. Smith. Years ago, it used to be you didn't get reimbursement until the end of the project and they don't do that anymore. Now it's kind of a pay as you go. So as soon as those invoices get submitted, you know, there's a little bit of time to process them, of course, but then they're, it's done in a pretty timely manner.
Can we try to do these a little bit? Like, I know that there's certain due dates on these things. Can we in our minds maybe make these due dates a month sooner just because, oh, I don't know, we're in a pandemic, that kind of a thing. So, you know, we don't know if we're gonna get shut down. We don't know what's gonna happen. If we could try to bump all of these up, you know, in our minds, just think, okay, let's not wait until December 30th to do the online enrollment projection. Let's, you know, I, I think maybe that just might be wise in case we find things that derail us.
And we're already, we're already thinking that way. That's why the initial compliance certification has already been accomplished. For the online enrollment projection, we use Nesdeck to help us with that. And I sent this afternoon all the information that they need to put together their enrollment projection and ask them, since I was delivering their information earlier, a month earlier than they usually receive it, would they be able to get this to us hopefully by late November, early December?
Okay.
But no, that's a, I try to operate in moving all of these different requirements. Hopefully, we're gonna be done well before the due date. So if there are questions or concerns, because some of them are going to be similar to the statement of interest, we'd be working in the MSBA portal. And, you know, so we're filling out things like the maintenance and the capital planning into a portal that they have. We would also do that around the educational profile questionnaire will be in their portal. And so we have, our liaison is a lady by the name of Elena Seiti. And she's been very helpful and very much an integral part of, you know, our first few steps. So we hope that continues. And we certainly can ask any questions of her and throughout the process.
Okay. How do you spell Seiti? I'm just curious.
S.E.I.T.I.
Thank you.
So along those lines, if there are no other questions on the, just the eligibility period itself, our, our next big step forward is developing and presenting a school building committee. And that's what that's in your package too. It gives you an idea. There are certain required people to be on this, such as you have to have a member who is MCPPO certified and show that that certification and Mrs. Blair qualifies for that. And I believe Mr. Fenny is also working through the process to become MCPPO certified. And so obviously, we would need Mrs. Blair, it makes sense, certainly as Assistant Superintendent for Business to be on this building committee. Then you need town officials as well. You need the local chief executive officer and that would be our town manager, Mary McNally. As you go down the list, the school committee members, you have a minimum of one. I would recommend that you put at least two on this committee and obviously you can't go to three because then you have a quorum and any vote that the school building committee takes is official then. So that's one piece. If, if people are comfortable, we might be able to address this evening. And then we will continue working to fill the designated positions such as a local official responsible for building maintenance. Joe Dunn, who works for the Department of Public Works, is the facilities manager. So it makes sense to have him fill that role. School principal, Mr. Page is the school principal. Makes sense for him to be in that role. And so forth.
So as it stands, if we do put two committee members on it, we are, we'd currently be at 10 for that committee and that would include a member of the community with architecture and engineering and construction experience. My thought is to keep the committee as nimble as possible. I imagine there'll be several meetings during the day. I don't know. Thoughts on the size of the committee to start, I guess?
Yeah, no, I think who we have at this point, because now is Mary McNally gonna be like counted as like three of the people here? Like how?
Yeah, I, I counted each individual person. So yeah, she fits three categories, but I counted her ones.
Okay.
So that's.
Fine. You know, the way towns are set up, they, they're trying to capture all the different components that they need, but Mary McNally would solve the administrator, the local chief executive and so forth.
Okay. Gordon, the formation of this committee doesn't mean that there aren't other future opportunities for other individuals to participate in the process as we think about forward planning. So this committee might serve one purpose, but there might be future committees where we might have a broader net cast that includes more voices, correct?
Absolutely. I think when they, when we hopefully get to the feasibility study, that's when they would probably be, bring in focus groups. What are people interested in? Both community members, students, staff and so forth. They're gonna have to capture all that. So there, there'll be opportunity throughout this process. And it's a lengthy process. I mean, just the eligibility period alone goes from October to June 28th, 2021. Then we're into that feasibility study and that could take a year or so as well because they're putting together all of that as well as the engineering. They'll look at both a comprehensive renovation at the high school and they will look at a new building and start to put figures to what each cost. And then ultimately, we would work with the MSBA to decide what's the best direction based on this study. But within that study, we would have many different focus groups that help us move that along.
Thank you. I just think that's important to note that even if this committee is maybe viewed as small or lean, like with 10 members, that that doesn't exclude individuals from the community, community or, or this committee to participate in other future discussions. Just means that for the purpose of this committee, we might be better served having it be at a smaller number so that they're able to really facilitate those future conversations in a really meaningful way.
Yeah. No, that's a good point, Sarah. Thank you. And that would be for all of the community to have a chance to have input. Certainly we want to get as much input on this whole project as possible. So in terms of school committee members, I'll just throw it out there, you know, being on the committee for as long as I have and being invested in this, certainly have interest in being one of the members on the committee. I don't know if others.
I, I also am interested in being one of the members.
I would also be interested in being one of the members too.
Okay.
I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna make it easy and say I'm involved in enough and I'll step aside from, from this one.
Okay. Sarah, you're, you're, you're good.
I'm okay for now, yes.
Okay. Uh, I don't know. How do you want to do it? How do you, what, how, you want to flip a coin?
Yeah.
You guys, you guys find it out and I'll make, hey, you guys play it out and I'll make the motion.
I don't know. I just think it's something that I've been, for myself personally, I have been on the committee for a while. We've, you know, I started with the processes, as does Greg, with this from the beginning. Getting it into MSBA, sitting there and being, you know, the conversations that we've had, the years that we've had to re-put it in, going down to the MSBA ourselves personally to, you know, push, push for this. And it's, it's just something that's important. I'd really like to be on.
The one thing I would say is though, that this group will probably meet during the day only because the members be town employees. I just want to throw that out. We can be flexible, but I would say the majority of the meetings, even if they're early afternoon, I don't necessarily ask all these people, you know, to come in after hours. I don't know if that makes sense.
Right. No, I know my, I can for this, I think I can. I think it's important enough for me that I would. I, I'd figure out how to adjust my personal schedule for it in the afternoon if they could be for me. No.
Hopefully when this process really gets going, we won't be remote and it will be in person. So I mean, that'll make a difference.
Right.
I mean, it's easier to, it's easier to zoom in from a remote location than to attend an in-person meeting here in, in this office or whatever. Just things to consider.
Yep.
If it's during the school day, then if a lot of the meetings are before 2:30, it would be difficult for me to come. But I do, I would like to be on the committee. I feel like I've had a lot of experience in high school, working in a high school for 16 years. Growing up in this town, I, I'm also very invested in it. But if it's something that the meetings are before 2:30, I, I won't be able to do it.
Would it make sense to have two positions and an alternate?
I was just gonna suggest that. Because you would stay away from a quorum in that respect.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that.
All right. Let me take a stab at this. I will nominate Greg Thompson and Elizabeth Marcy and Boucher to be. Greg Thompson and Elizabeth Marcy and Boucher to be on the school building. Committee with Antonella Rochella as the alternate.
Are you all right with that, Antonella? I don't want to overstep.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there.
So if I'm the alternate, what does that really mean that I'm doing?
You can only come if one of us is not coming.
It's not coming.
But you would be kept up to speed on everything. I'm just, you know, I made the motion for discussion purposes. It doesn't get seconded, it dies.
Why don't we sleep on this one? We'll come back to it. We got time. Let's put it back on the agenda in two weeks.
I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you all. But.
We get to November second, we don't have a lot of time, just in deference to our due.
What's our deadline, the thirtieth? Cool. Let's move on then, but we'll set it at ten. Is everybody comfortable at that, the ten that we have designated? And Gordon and I can start reaching out to all these folks and, oh, I know Gordon, you already have talked to a bunch of them, right?
I've spoken to some. I will start reaching out to the ones I have not spoken to. And then obviously looking at. People who have helped us that are members of the community that may have architectural, engineering or construction experience. I think, you know, that's obviously something we need to discuss.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you all for that discussion. We're on our way.
Been a long time.
Yeah, it is. Long way to go still. The other thing, actually, now you say that, Beth, the other thing I was thinking, we may want to add, you know. A parent of a kindergartner because really they're the ones who are invested in this long-term thing. When I got on this school board, I didn't even have kindergartners yet and now my two are in high school. So I'm I'm just thinking. Maybe one of the community members would be a young, a young parent.
That might be a good idea.
Just to see it through fruition, you know, because my kids will be long gone before this this building ever gets built. But anyway, just a separate thing. Let's move on. Okay, we're going to go forward. We have a some updates on our learning model. Gordon, you want to start with that or?
And so as people know, we're now moving into four and a half weeks of a remote learning model. And basically what that means is we have about ninety-five percent of our students. Learning remotely and the focus of the staff is trying to make that as robust and structured as possible. And I think that our summer professional development and the first ten days of school really helped our staff. Figure out what's the best way to put that together. With that said, we do know that in certainly in public comment, parents are stating that, you know, there are challenges. There are challenges that we're having on our side and there are challenges that families are having with a remote model. Right now, we probably have about a hundred and twenty or so students coming into the schools for in-person learning. Some are here five days a week, some are here two or three days a week. Predominantly that has been students with significant and complex needs. But as we start working and looking, each building has a team that we're calling our multiple tiered. Support system team, M T S S teams. And we're looking at, you know, how students are doing, we're looking at attendance, we're looking at how they're engaging. We're looking at, you know, teachers obviously know their students pretty well. And so we're looking at. Students who maybe not are performing up to their ability. Part of that is that just recently first through eighth grade, just finished the eye ready diagnostic. And so now we're getting the reports and our academic coaches and Mrs. Brown are scheduling times to meet with grade level teams. To really look at that information as we know, not only in East Long Meadow, but across the Commonwealth and probably across the country. With what happened last March, that there are gaps. And and we want to make sure that we're adjusting and supporting our students in the best way possible. Going forward, as we look at that, and I think Mr. Thompson, you mentioned this earlier as you were taking some of the public comments. We're also working with our staff to look at where do we transition as we look to make a decision. Bringing more people back in person. The M T S S teams are looking at and looking at that individually for individual students. And then we as a group of administrators and working with our E L E A. East Long Meadow Education Association representatives from each building. We're starting to have those conversations and look at what is the the next step in transitioning. And we have scheduled a time to meet with our E L E A representatives this Thursday afternoon to start. Discussing some of these things and look at what makes sense, what's going to keep people safe and secure. But also allow them to start to or continue to make progress in their learning.
Okay, and also we're going to be looking for some community input again. We will have an opportunity to send out another survey. Just to be clear about what the survey, we're going to ask on the survey is if in fact we are able to return either in a hybrid or full model. You know, which families think they'll be sending their students in? I know we're still a little ways away from the January timeframe. But probably folks are starting to get an idea whether or not they would feel comfortable sending their kids into school. And from there, we'll get an understanding of how many students will actually be in the building. And if we're able to potentially fit them all in, or if we have to go with the hybrid model, which only gets in half at a time. So certainly exploring all the options. We're going to go through all the buildings, each individual classroom. We have plans to count the desks, so we actually have a full count of the students that you'd be able to get in. This will all depend on the the situation on the ground and for lack of a better term, in terms of statistics. And the chart from the from the Department of Public Health. So we continue to work on it. We know there's a desire to get students back in these buildings. We know that COVID is not disappearing anytime soon. We are completely aware of that. We understand a lot of families are struggling right now with this unique way of learning. I think the staff is doing a fantastic job, the best they can with the bad situation that we have and they will continue to do that. But this committee is certainly has our eyes forward on how we do get back safely and we're going to continue to work on that. We have had several meetings with our health officials, both on school committee full meetings. And as a side, we've met with them several times, the superintendent, assistant superintendent and myself. So we'll continue to take their advice. We continue to get input from the state. We just received another letter today and we'll continue to work with them. So we're focused on moving forward and we're going to do the best we can if if the situation allows it. We will, we'll get these kids in as soon as we can because we know it's important for families. And but we're all sort of keeping an eye on keeping them safe. And we know that because we have a fully remote model right now, we know what tomorrow looks like for all our students. It's not ideal, I know that. But we're on a good track, the best we can be so far, so.
And we're also going to look at the best and worst practices of the towns around us. They're they're learning right now and they're they are ever evolving. There's there's not one hybrid program that I know of that has stayed the same since the first day of school. So we're going to take what they've learned, hopefully, and if we do come back hybrid, we do come up full. We're we're going to know what we're, hopefully, we'll know what we're doing better than if we had started back in August.
And if I may, you know, a lot of what towns around us have done. Is they've sort of rolled into a hybrid. So really there, many towns are just now fully into a hybrid that spans, say, K to twelve. West Springfield is moving that direction, but they have yet to start it. They will be starting that after professional development, so they're still all remote. And so people, just as you said, Mrs. Marcy and Boucher, districts are trying to learn from each other. We're sharing that information. Tomorrow I'll be with all seven districts, seven superintendents. Plus the Executive Director of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, because that's the collaborative. We are members of which we are members. And, you know, obviously we're discussing our daily work. But we're also discussing how are things working like transportation? What's working in terms of, say, Ham to Wilbraham's hybrid versus Long Meadows hybrid? And what challenges have they seen? So there's a lot of sharing and learning from each other. And I think, Mr. Thompson, you mentioned, but you know, it makes sense. October, at our October fifth meeting, we had our local health officials and our medical advisors. And and I think we should invite them to their first meeting of each month. And make sure that we're looking at that data. People may know that the metric that the commissioner and the governor are using, where it's gray, green, yellow, red. We're in the red. But interestingly enough, a lot of the state is in the red right now. So so that's going to be important information to watch. If you look at the area around Boston, most of the South Shore and most of the North Shore are in red. And they may have just entered red as we did, so they asked for us to look at sort of three weeks of that metric.
Right. And so if if we were in right now, either hybrid or full, and we did enter the red zone. As you said, Gordon, if it went to three weeks, we would have to go remote based on their their recommendations anyway. So it's a it's a moving fluid situation and we'll continue to work on it. Does somebody have a hand up? I saw there.
I was just going to ask a question then or clarify. So I think as we talked about making the transition to January, is it a fair assessment then to say to folks who are listening and to families who who watch this? After the fact that this this will be a ongoing conversation and the standing agenda item between now and January. So that folks are really able to see in a transparent fashion, the conversations that are unfolding. Because you think that there's been a real call from families to really hear us engaging in the conversation during our sessions. And that this is kind of like the the launch of that, knowing that we'll have the public health officials back, that there'll be a meeting that's convened with the E L E A. And that we'll have some kind of a report out from that at the next agenda, on the next agenda, just that folks can kind of watch and monitor the process. Just so that we're kind of being transparent with the folks who are who are listening in.
That's always the goal. Yep, yep, definitely, Sarah. Thank you.
Sounds good. Definitely. One more thing, Greg. I think we definitely should engage our health department and her board. At least once a month to find out where the numbers are going and what their recommendations are as we move forward.
Yep, that's always been the plan. Yeah, I agree.
Good. I've just restated.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and to be clear, you know, behind the scenes, a lot of things are still going on, you know, on a constant basis in terms of this. So but certainly getting out the information as quickly and as often as possible is important. We're all in this together and folks need to know where we're at, so. Okay, anything else on this subject? Nope. All right, we will move forward then. We have a F Y twenty twenty fourth quarter financial report.
Right, so in your package, you'll see the report that is our final financial report for F Y twenty. I apologize, this took a little longer than it typically does. We, you know, had a little delay in closing the fiscal year. So that's a process and it takes a little bit of time. So thank you for your patience. So if you go to right to page four, you'll see that the salaries for the operating budget are in the top half of the page. At the top, you'll notice that there is a large remaining balance in athletics of forty thousand dollars. And that is due to the pandemic closure and not being able to do the spring sports. When you make your way down the salary account, you'll see some are positive, a couple negative. The bottom line there on the salaries is nine thousand nine fourteen as a positive balance. On the bottom half of that sheet are your expenditure accounts for the operating budget. I do want to bring to your attention that this year, last year, I created a new account for COVID P P E expenditure. So that we could track that accurately and quickly, you know, hoping that there would be some grant reimbursement, et cetera, down the road. So what I do want to bring to your attention is that you'll see that there is sixty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars that was encumbered. When the year closed out, in addition to that is eighteen thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars that we actually expended and paid for. Which the town then did a journal entry back to their book so that they could get FEMA reimbursement for that. So all in all, last year, not including anything this year, last year, we spent eighty-two thousand sixty-four dollars on P P E for the COVID. You know, closure. The bottom line of the expenditure side is seventy-five thousand one twenty-five positive. Therefore, at the very bottom there, you'll see that I'm very happy to say that what we returned to the town's general fund is a hundred and thirty-five thousand thirty-nine dollars. Are there any questions on the operating budget?
Pam, are there still outstanding orders for P P E equipment? I know there was a backlog of a lot of things. Is that still the current situation?
At this point in time, we've gotten in mostly everything. There are still a few things on back order. I hope all our friends out there realize that we started to order this P P E back in April and May. And we literally just got some of it in in the past, you know, few weeks. So but I'm happy to say that that we are looking good. You know, it's it's certainly was a challenging year and I'm, I'm glad to see that one end. Not that this one's not going to be a challenge, but anyways, that's the way our operating budget ended.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the operating budget?
And the whole budget reflects the fact that we are using or the the entire staff is still working, even though we're in a remote model. We haven't furloughed any staff and that's why our lineups are are whole still.
That's correct. Thank you for the clarification. So if you go on to page five, you're going to see our grants and revolving accounts here. And up on the top half are your grants. And I I listed, I included, there were small minor increases that that always happens towards the end of the year. When the, when Desi finds out that some people, some districts, whatever, didn't use all of the funding. But then they put it back in the pool and kind of distribute it. So you'll see those amounts there with Title One, three hundred and sixty-three dollars, Title Two, five hundred and one dollars. I D E A, three thousand one hundred thirty-six additional dollars, Metco Grant, three thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. So I've added those amounts in there. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. You'll see that all of those grants, you know, in the good and were rolled into F Y twenty-one. So we could expend those funds with, you know, F Y twenty-one this current year. Any questions on the grants at all?
Are the grants, those are the ones you said we can roll specifically this year because of COVID, right?
We can anyway, some grants we can't, like Kelly's D P H grant, that one ends. But these here typically we can roll monies in, but normally we expend all of the funds. We don't typically roll them over, but so that is due to to COVID, definitely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the bottom section are your revolving accounts. And you'll see, I always list the the amount that was carried forward at the beginning of the year, all your receipts, your expenditures. You'll see those balances there again are all rolled into F Y twenty-one. I want to bring to your attention that they went to the fourth line down. I did add that so that it would be very clear and transparent to you that we had started the student mobile technology insurance. Self-funded insurance program, which has been a success. So I wanted to show the balance in there and any expenditures coming out. Transportation, you're going to see that that hardly has any balance in it. And that's due to the fact that we had to refund parents for the, you know, we were hoping when the closure happened, just to remind everybody out there. We were hoping that we were just going to be out for a short time and be able to bring all of our families, our students back. But that didn't happen, so some folks did request a refund. Then we were hoping to be able to roll it into that that ninety dollar credit in F Y twenty-one. But then that didn't happen. So we started to get many, many calls about the refund, people, folks really wanting the refund. So we worked on a lot of those in F Y twenty and you're going to see that actually roll into F Y twenty-one as well. Yep.
I'm sorry, Pam, are there still folks that have not received the refund yet?
I think at this point in time, everyone should have received it. Or maybe I should clarify that it's being processed. It's it takes a little bit of time through a municipality. There's just, you know, process. It does take like three to four weeks before a check is actually issued. Most folks, I believe, should have their refunds. If they give us another week or two, everyone should have them. And if they don't, they should call the transportation department.
Okay, and that's all reflected in the ending balance that it's all. Okay, and that's all reflected in the ending balance that it's all accounted for or?
That that's going to roll into FY 21.
Okay, I see. So we haven't encumbered it all yet, the refunds.
Not as of the June 30. Remember, I'm still in last year, so that was June 30.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just Pam, going back to the student mobile technology insurance. After this year, potentially, we we might reassess that in terms of the amount.
I think that that was our plan, right? We were gonna collect it. We made up a plan. We felt good about it. We felt it was fair and reasonable. And I think it's working out really, really well, and certainly the plan was to reassess this this year so that, you know, if we could cut down on the insurance amount or, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have some history. We'll know actually how what it's actually costing us.
Now, remember, the plan at first was with the high school in Birchland Park, and then that changed because of our situation, and then it opened up to all of the schools. And, you know, eventually, we were able to get a link on our website so that people could do online payments. It might not have happened so quickly this year, this this past year, so a lot of folks maybe had to pay with a check. But going forward, we're trying to get more things to be able to pay online. So again, we appreciate everybody's patience out there with us. Um, school lunch, I just wanted to make a little comment about that. The balance is a bit lower than it typically is, and we did continue to pay our staff, and we had no reimbursement coming in for any any food claims. So, you know, that's why you see a reduction there in the balance.
And we'll be able to sustain that still with the grant throughout the year, is that the plan?
That that is, that is our hope. And now that there is a national free lunch is really what what it is through this whole school year, through the end of FY 21, which is really fabulous. It's kept our employees working and our families getting the food that they that they need. So every day, Lori Paul and her staff, food service, are out in the front of the high school between, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smith, 3:15 to 5:45, delivering approximately, well, people pull up and it's a grab and go. It's about 800 lunches and about 800 breakfasts that they are putting out every single day, which is why they had started to at first, when this all started, we were hoping to just do a Tuesday and Friday grab and go, but that didn't work when the when the numbers grew so quickly. We just do not have the staff. We don't have the space. Everything is packaged individually, so there's a, you know, a larger cost to that, more time consuming, and for all of those reasons, we had to go to the daily, and I think it's been a great success.
And they're doing a phenomenal job, rain or shine.
Yeah.
Mic reverse, they're out there. Doesn't matter.
Thank you, everybody, for supporting the food service, and they do a great job. So I listed the balances there, and as I said, I'm glad to see this year come to closure, and does anyone have any questions?
No, I was just going to say thank you, Pam. We were already in a very challenging budget situation prior to March happening, and I think that you've been very transparent and helpful in terms of being able to navigate the finances for the schools and have been able to put us in a position where we've been able to utilize grant funds in a really strategic way to ensure that when we do come back, we have what we need to ensure everyone's safety. And also that we've been able to really maintain a budget that that is healthy for the schools and still really being cognizant of the town's needs as well. So I just thank you for your your commitment to really helping helping us get through these really troubling and challenging financial times.
Thank you.
And all attached to the amount of time, Pam, that you put into it, every time I stop in this office, seems like you're, you've got your nose in that notebook of yours, so.
The end of year report, so that's consuming me, but that's another topic. So yes, I'll vote on this one here, the final financial statement.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the FY 24th quarter financial report.
We approve the 2024 quarter financial report as presented.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah, discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay. Where's my agenda? We have the first quarter financial report. Oh, you're up again, Pam.
I'm up again. I figured, you know, while we're putting closure to one, we might as well just go right into the other. So as you can see, we have the first quarter as of September 30 of 2020, your operating budget as well as your grants and revolving. Again, if you go to page four, you'll see I have the salaries at the top and everything is, you know, it's it's the first quarter, so everything's looking really good, and we do encumber most of our salaries, so that's why you'll see down the bottom there the totals for the salaries that we already have expended 3.4 million, but we've encumbered 21 million, and that's, you know, our unit A, our our teachers are all encumbered, and most of the salaries are. So if you go to the bottom section, you'll see our expenditures on the expense side. And what I want to bring to your attention is that on the contracted services and the tuition to collaboratives, I have not done any encumbrances yet, so you see large amounts there. There's still some discussions happening, as you can imagine. So you'll, that will be reflected on the second quarter, and that's why you see such a large balance at the at the bottom there. So to remind everyone, our balance, I mean, our budget this year is $31,594,089. We have expended to date $3,550,761. We've encumbered $22,127,22, which leaves a remaining balance $5,836,05 at the end of first quarter here. Are there any other questions?
So looking at the substitute line item, we've had, we've we've used substitutes already then this year, correct? We've encumbered 20,000?
Correct.
Okay, so even in the remote learning model, we have a, we've been using substitutes.
That's correct. Yes.
Great. Okay.
Page five, you'll see your grants and your revolving, and again, the grants are at the top of the page. I did list out the FY 20, all of those grants that I rolled over into FY 21, so that's why you'll see those there, and as they become expended, you'll see them zero out like in, you know, my second quarter, but for right now, at the end of this quarter, they're still, they're still there. Then you see your FY 21 grants. They're all the same ones. We always get the entitlements, the Title I, Title II, Title IV, IDEA, Special Ed, Early Childhood. You do see the two new grants that you had already approved, I believe, back in August, I think, the CVRF grant, which is part of the CARES Act, that's the Corona Virus Relief Fund. That one ends on December 30th, so that does not give us a lot of time to expend those funds. So obviously, any anything that we can put onto that COVID grant is exactly what we're going to do, to expend it down. The other grant, ESSER Grant, which stands for Elementary Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund. Did I get that right, Gordon?
Yeah.
That one, that grant is actually, does not have to be totally obligated until September of 2022. And for that reason, we will do our best to not even expend those funds unless we have to, since we don't know what the future holds here for the school department. So that's our plan, and, you know, I'm hoping that that can come to fruition that way. And we have our state grants, the Metco and the Comprehensive School Health Grant from DPH, and the private grants, which we're just finishing up, the Project Lead the Way High School and Maple Shade. Those were rollover amounts from last year. Actually, we are not getting any new funds under those grants this year. And those are our grants. Does anyone have any questions on those?
Do you expect to encumber the whole Metco grant through the year? I see half of it has only been encumbered so far.
Well, transportation is is it's because I'm still have not encumbered the the amount for transportation.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So on the bottom side is the bottom of the page is your revolving accounts. You know, everything looks good. They're they're healthy balances, except, of course, when we get down to your transportation and your school lunch, which we already had conversations about that. Some of the budget for the CVRF grant was taken into consideration that we're going to need to help out transportation and school lunch. Example, Lori Paul for food service, all those items that were unbudgeted, that she had no idea she was going to have to be buying, those paper cartons, the individual plastic bags, the additional salaries that she's got to pay. We're all, she's giving me those invoices, and we're paying them directly under the CVRF grants. We're trying to partner with her with that to keep that, you know, successful, the transportation account. Circuit Breaker, what I wanted to bring to your attention is that typically, the fourth quarter payment of every school year ends up coming in, even though it's due June 30, it ends up coming in like July 2, July 3. So it goes on to the following year's financial, but this last year in FY 20, it actually came through on June 29. So the money was posted there, so we were able to roll over that $345,782. The money still stays the same in them. Do you know what I mean? It's just a matter of do you get four or do you get five? Yeah, exactly. So I did just get notified actually today that Circuit Breaker, let's see, the first quarter, because I hadn't seen anything posted at all about Circuit Breaker, so I actually reached out to Rob O'Donnell at Desi, who quickly got back to me and said that they were just putting the numbers together, as you can imagine, with things being really crazy at the state level. They've been trying to delve through all of this and figure out what percentage, and if you recall, last year, we did a lot of talking about the different percentages for Circuit Breaker. Is it going to be 69? Is it going to be 70, 75? Well, they have put down, they've just put it out to all of the business managers that they believe it's estimated to be at 70% in our first quarter. We can expect to be $262,000. So again, it takes a little while for it to get posted into Munis, but hopefully, you'll see that on the second quarter. I'm just glad to hear that the Circuit Breaker is coming. Because it's a substantial amount of money that comes to our district, and, you know, Dr. Welch does a ton of work on that Circuit Breaker reimbursement. This is all from special ed expenditures, and we are estimated to be at $1,048,000 of reimbursement. And of course, as this, as as more information comes to me, I'll share that with you. I did, as I said, I just got notified today. There's going to be a Circuit Breaker meeting on, it's either Wednesday or Thursday, so I'll get an update there and maybe have clearer information to share with you next month. But that's where we stand with Circuit Breaker, and again, I find that positive, and I'm really happy about that. Does anyone have any questions on the revolving?
Looks good.
Okay, thank you all very much. And I just would like to say one last thing. It's imperative to remember that the balances provided are a snapshot in time, and they are changing constantly. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to accept the FY 2021 first quarter financial report.
I move to approve the FY 2021 quarterly financial report as of September 30, 2020.
Motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Any other discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Blair.
Oh, I'm on again, aren't I?
You are.
Do we just go right into it?
Yes, please.
Okay, so agenda night item number 5.2.3 is a gift for Mountain View School. It's from the Mudge family, $21.01 to go into the gift account to be used towards the library.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the gift?
Move to approve the gift donation to Mountain View Elementary School Library in the amount of $21.01. One cent.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Okay. We had some discussion earlier in an executive session regarding a memorandum of understanding with Unit A regarding the co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Have a motion to approve that, please.
Move to approve the MOU with Unit A on co-curricular and extracurricular activities.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah, discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. And then we have the paraprofessional contract also discussed discussed in the executive session. In fact, I know a motion to approve that as well.
Move to approve the Unit E contract as presented.
Motion made by Bill.
I'll second it.
Second by Beth, discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Okay, with that, we've come to the conclusion. I'm curious if I didn't mention some, we had some questions earlier on. I'm going to review those questions, and if we didn't answer them all today, certainly will address those in the next meeting. But I'll go back and listen to those again. I I know a lot of folks have a lot of questions and are interested, and we want to be as open and as honest as we can with folks, so we will, we will address that. Anything else for this evening? Okay, with that, I'll entertain an emotion to adjourn, please.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Beth, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Okay, thank you all for your time and have a pleasant evening.